They'll prep and deliver meals on wheels through Echo Medical Ministries. And Friday will be dedicated to student care, driving deliveries, delivering food to the local pantry. I want to commend our police department on the many community events they organize year-round. Yes. We know this has taken much longer than we anticipated. To say that we have not been persistent is an understatement. The repair work for the electrical damage from Hurricane Nate, and I know that's been a long time ago, has been difficult to move forward with. The transmitters that had to be repaired needed to have special design for being located over water, and we did not have the internal experience to do this. We had to request a FEMA extension, and the contractor is now full speed ahead, and you'll start seeing some really quick updates here pretty soon. The lighting under the fire portico continues to fail because the power source is half the voltage it needs. The electrical contractor has been at work on this as well. On a brighter note, we are ordering fish cleaning stations for the pier as many citizens have requested. These stations should help immensely with the conditions we've had to deal with when fish are cleaned on the benches. Or the pier itself. We do ask that these sites be properly maintained by the user so that everyone may continue to enjoy the Fairhope Pier. And mark your calendars. September 21st is the 32nd Annual Alabama Coastal Cleanup. And if you'll see the image on the slide, that is the tee-shirt, and you'll get one for free for coming down. We all meet up at the municipal pier, starting at 8:00, and the cleanup is from 8:00 to 12:00. And I've been enjoying it. There's so many people down there, it's not a lot of work for anyone, but it is fun to meet everybody up and watch the bayfront get cleaned up. On tonight's agenda, there are two items that I've requested be pulled for additional communication and planning. If you'd like a summary for those agenda items, you can pick up a copy at the back table, at the back of the council chambers. Both agenda items, in my opinion, lack transparent communication, and citizens need to be aware of the facts. The first is Agenda Item Number 9, which is the final adoption to establish the mayor and council salary for next term. A decision that does not need to take place until February 2020. The city is having its comp study updated by Auburn University for all of our job positions, including mayor and council. Since the new salaries have not gone through any formal unbiased comp study, something that is required for all other salaries and pay grades for city employees, I've asked council to table this until Auburn can give their recommendation. For some of us who were new to this term, and I can speak for myself, and I'm not sure about some of the other new people, I didn't know that elected officials received free family insurance. But this has been something that's been passed every, up to six months of every term for the next elected officials. This benefit requires no premium, almost a zero deductible, and benefits for the whole family. We pay zero premium, and it's good for every single person in our family. I was like, my immediate thought was, how can the city afford this? I mean, these are taxpayers. I did not realize until I started putting the budget together and asking for this to be broken out for me what the true cost was. This benefit is unheard of anywhere in the country, and it was not financially sustainable for taxpayers. I proposed in 2017 for council to change this for new hires, and after this change, the cost has improved. Part-time employees have never been offered this benefit. What I don't understand is why, after changing this for employees, why would council keep this benefit for future elected officials? I, for one, am tired of the phrase because it's the way we've always done it. Offering this has resulted in 100% participation in personnel and elected officials in the past without taxpayers' knowledge. Now that we have a transparent budget, where citizens know exactly where each dollar is spent, and we finally made the city self-sustaining, why would this unfair benefit be perpetuated? The city is self-insured, so the total cost of health insurance is divided up among full-time employees. It's divided up for people who have single insurance, and then divided up for those who have family insurance. In 2017, the cost for each family insurance package was $17,200. The cost in 2019, like I said, we have been reducing this number, was $15,576. Now, everyone up here knows the value because I made sure that I've broken it out in the budget. So why would council vote to keep it intact? The total cost to taxpayers this term will be estimated at a minimum of $374,000. I have brought this up in each work session where the salaries were being discussed, but to no avail. If council approves this tonight before waiting on the results of the Auburn Comp Study, next term salaries will be $100,576,000 a year, plus an option for an additional salary for Superintendent of Utilities for the mayor. Council will benefit a total of $27,576, and the council president, $28,776. Based on our population, I think it would be safe to say that we would per capita be the highest-paid council in the state. These are service positions. These salaries need to suit people who want to serve. Last term, the mayor was paid $107,200 because he was paid the mayor salary, an additional salary for superintendent, and free family insurance. And he had a full-time city administrative role as well, funded for him to help him run the city. I'll get to that in the next slide. Council benefit last year was $24,400 when you count the free family insurance. And then the council president was $25,600. This year, because I refused to accept the superintendent of utilities and said that I would like for this to fund an operation director, a much-needed position in the state for the state of our utilities, I accepted $32,400. And with the benefits, the free insurance, is $47,976. Council was paid the equivalent benefit of $25,176, and then council president is $26,376. These are part-time positions. The reason for the reduction in the mayor's salary is, and I explained, was the superintendent of utilities, and then we hired a civil engineer with extensive experience in utilities, who now has a five-year plan in each utility to upgrade it. I am here to serve. I don't care what the salary is. I would hope that a future mayor would want to serve or be in a position where they don't have to have exorbitant salaries and really unprecedented health insurance coverage. Elected officials should want to serve regardless of the salary, and the salary should attract this type of person. Approving this longstanding hidden benefit, which equals 62% of the current council benefit, is simply taking advantage of taxpayers. As far back as 2001, the city employed a full-time city administrative position. It's been called different things, from city administrator to administrative superintendent and general superintendent. But it's always been there since 2001. The election for this term was August 16th. And last term's council, which includes councilmember L. Amboon, voted to defund this position October 21st, 2016, two weeks before I started office. The city of Fairhope, the fastest-growing city in the state, would need a full-time administrative role, now more than ever. It's in the 2020 proposed budget because it has been a blatant omission, a decision I believe is sketchy, considering all the other decisions that have been made over the course of three years to reduce my resources. Last year's mayor's benefit was $107,200. I put this one in the middle because it's easy. The last agenda item is for the boutique hotel. This item was up for approval on May 29th, but it was tabled. I want to make citizens aware that this developer went through a long, rigorous, open, transparent approval process which started this term. He did everything right. It does not matter if an individual does not agree with its perceived value to the city. This is the developer's property, and he had it designed according to our regulations. Before this term, planning decisions were not consistent and depended on who you were sometimes to determine the outcome. Taxpayers paid dearly for this, millions and millions of dollars in lawsuits. Under my watch, the city of Fairhope will evaluate site plans in a fair, consistent, transparent way. There's a reason why we have not had a lawsuit due to an unfair approval process this term. The city can no longer afford to go back to the old way of doing business, and we certainly cannot afford to have developers go through a negotiation process with individual councilmen at the 11th hour. This is blackmail as far as I'm concerned, and taxpayers would end up paying for it. Just now, I addressed these items first with council. When I'm ignored, as usual, that's when I bring the issues to the public. Agenda item number 16 is to approve a purchase for Parkland, an amount of $2,650,000, without funding, community engagement, or strategic planning. Understand, the Parkland this administration negotiated on Twin Beach would have been paid over a three-year period at 0% interest out of impact fees, fees that are designated for this purpose. There would have not been any need to borrow money, diminish our reserves, or deplete impact fees for other projects in 2020 budget, such as ADA-compliant bleachers at our football field, building pickleball courts at the tennis center, enhancing the Fairhope Rotary Youth Playground, and other projects. There's the notion that council president and I oppose each other's agendas. I guess this would make sense if I pushed for objectives behind closed doors. The difference between us is I propose objectives through inclusive, collaborative, and strategic planning. It's this process I've been trying to instill in council's process for the last three years. On May 29th, many of y'all were here because council was voting for the appraisal for the property on 13 and 32. And when the citizens came out and realized that this was, instead of potentially purchasing the Twin Beach property, a lot of people came out and spoke up, and it was very heartfelt, and I really enjoyed listening to everybody speak. However, following the routine decision-making strategies of the past, that's exactly what happened. We went from having an agenda item for an appraisal, which was communicated as "all we're doing is getting it appraised," to now, and it's on tonight's agenda for approval. No communication in between. The purchase is not in our 2020 budget, and we're in the middle of presenting it now. We do not have the funds available in impact fees. Limited city reserves are needed for critical infrastructure for our facilities, none of which have been presented yet. The city just paid off our debt in June, just a few months ago. Do citizens want to have a say in what's going on when we go into debt? When this administration has finally accomplished a self-sustaining city budget without using utility profits. No rush, plenty of opportunities available east of 98 for a long time. The city is in the middle of a comprehensive planning plan with National Park Service. National Park Service recommended the Twin Beach Road Park. They opposed the park on 13 and 32 because of its lack of comprehensive planning, walkability, This was a slide I added this afternoon when I finally saw the appraisal. Understand, I never had any discussions about this purchase. It was all done behind my back. I received a copy of the appraisal late this morning, and I believe council received it July 12th. I have no idea why I didn't receive it, but I would imagine...
July 12th.
Okay. Well, I would imagine that y'all looked at it since July 12th.
You should have.
I looked at it today.
Well, you got it, July 12th.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, July 12th, did you have an opportunity to look at it?
I did.
Okay.
So did you.
I looked at it today, and I'm going to go over those details. I kind of know now why it wasn't discussed with me, let's just say that. I'm assuming, council, you've reviewed the appraisal, and the first thing I noticed was that it was only 113 acres instead of 114. That's no big deal, except that that does increase the premium of what council's willing to pay over the asking price. When I skipped over to page 44, to the comp page, the meat of the appraisal, I saw the appraiser used four comps in determining the value of the property. Two should have never been included, and I've never seen anything like this before. One is a pending sale, and I couldn't find record that it was ever sold. The other one is just a listing. And I've been in finance for a very long time. I have never seen a listing as a comp in an appraisal. The two most relevant comps... The closest comp was a sale in July 2018, which was located directly across the street of the proposed purchase. It sold for $14,935 an acre. The appraisal adjusted it to $17,508. The second actual sale was for 98 acres, sold on January 2017, for $12,755 an acre, adjusted for $14,718. These are the only ones that closed, and so I'm sure that y'all can communicate more than that, but these were the two sales. And in the fastest-growing city in the state, I find it hard to believe that we can't find sales. Certainly, you know, we're not desperate enough to use a pending sale and a listing. So based on those two sales, if you took the average of the adjustments, we're at $16,000 an acre. The asking price per acre, if you use 113 acres, is $23,451, and that is 47% overvalued. So, I mean, based on those figures and everybody's reasoning of not wanting to purchase this, I would imagine that the Twin Beach is looking pretty good now. And that's really all I've got, and I hope that this will be tabled so we can discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure that there will be many, many comments disputing some of those remarks in the coming hours. Public participation for agenda items. If you would like to address the council on Items 5 through 20, you can come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm going to try to beat the Twin Beach people coming up. My name is Savan Wilson. I'm at 120 Oak Bend Court, and I'd like to speak about Item 20. First, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the council really trying to negotiate a solution to the property issue with the Hotel Corner. We're not against the hotel. It's well-designed, and when it came up between way back, and I agree with you that it's not fair to the developer, but no one really understood that footprint until much later, I think, in the process. And most citizens didn't realize there was a problem with this corner until they saw the way it really budded right up to the sidewalk. I felt a land swap was a very reasonable idea, and I appreciate it very much because I know how hard you tried to make that happen. And I know it was suggested to the developer, and he decided he didn't want to do the land swap, I think, but instead that you could purchase it, and I'm not even sure of the amount, but I know it was over-appraised value, but maybe not too much over-appraised value. I know the mayor and the council did feel that value was too high, and it was high. But it's difficult to put a value on this historic corner, in my opinion. However, it is significantly valued by the citizens of Fairhope. I would have hoped that others would have assisted in this purchase if asked or had the opportunity. As the historic center of Fairhope, it could have been named Founder's Corner, or even enhanced as a public space during 125th anniversary year. Interestingly, the city-owned part of the courtyard area that was the proposed swap has an entrance, I think, to the hotel. And in the future, I think it's going to be perceived as the courtyard of the hotel property. So we lose all around, or the public loses all around. Unfortunately, this possible loss rests with your decision tonight. The developer is not going to change the design or his own, and maybe he shouldn't. I understand that, and I do am sorry it's come to this. We all, everyone in this room, should have been much more concerned much earlier during the original approval stages of this project. Doesn't change the facts. No one seemed to realize the historic center of Fairhope could be changed forever by the design of the footprint when we all realized what it was. Historic areas of Fairhope, and this is a very sad thing to me, seem to have no legal protection for many reasons over the years. But with new structures that I'm already seeing being built right up to the very edge of sidewalks on both Section Street and Fairhope Street, right now, just drive, you'll see them. They're already built, many of them. Maybe we do need to reevaluate our guidelines for downtown so we'll have better legal standing in the future. The developer is completely in his rights to build whatever he wants on his property, even if it was single tax exempt, he could do that because we don't make those decisions. I encourage you, and I don't know if you will or you can, but to table this vote tonight or vote no, and once again, try to find an equitable solution with perhaps partners who want to protect this valued public space. I am very sorry for all concerned, and the time I know you've each spent answering people's calls and questions, and you know it's an unpopular decision. But this public area is the historic center of Fairhope, and it can never be replaced. Once that building's there, right up to the sidewalk, and you've seen another rendition lately in the Fairhope towns, we can't go back. But perhaps it could be protected through your actions tonight, and perhaps tabling it and trying to find partners to buy this property. We've already shown over the years, property is bought all the time for over-appraised value. I wish it could be possible to do this in an easy way, and it should have been. And I apologize for not bringing this up much sooner, but I've been kind of waiting for a few months for it to come back up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Gover?
Good evening, council. My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I wanted to speak about Item 16 on the agenda, the acquisition of 114 or so acres for recreational land in the vicinity of the airport. I had no idea the mayor was going to make her presentation this evening, but I generally support her concerns about this item. I think that this will be a substantial investment on the part of all the households, all the citizens of Fairhope. I think it's going to, the initial sort of down payment, the acquisition of the land, is going to average about $500 a household. And that's really just a down payment on whatever this would be when it's fully developed. As a recreational land, I do not see that this could be considered prime real estate for such a purpose. It sits at the end of the airport runway and would be right in the path over its whole length of four takeoffs and landings. That's not exactly my idea of a park or a ball field or something like that. Further, I think that I don't know how this type of large facility fits in the ideas of the comprehensive plan. Small-town atmosphere, walkability, and so on, 100-acre recreational facilities in the center of the city, just, I don't know how one squares that with the concepts of our comprehensive plan. I think that a process of community engagement and reconciling this idea with the comprehensive plan would be necessary before making the commitments to close on this just two months from now. I don't see how we could possibly work that out. So because of the scale of the investment and because of the uncertainty of what this would be and how much it would cost, I'd recommend that a lot more homework needs to be done before we go forward and close on this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. Thank you, Mr. Gove.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Corey Martin. I live at 829 Summer Lake Street. I won't take much of your time. I came back in the summer when we first spoke on this agenda, and I ask you guys to do the right thing. It kind of went away. We put a lot of effort into getting that property over in the historical district that we called South Twin Beach. And I'm here again to ask you all to take in consideration the equity that that park would bring to that community. There are other acres behind that acreage that we could also purchase. And I know that the 114 acres sounds good to guys, and it looks like it's a good deal, but it seems when I read the information that we are going over budget. And what I was told when I came back in July was that we were concerned about the taxpayers' dollars. And right now, if we're going over budget and we're going into debt, that means there's interest on those bonds. And if there's interest on those bonds, what that guy was asking, you could pay that guy the same amount of money. And then we can look further until we get more acreage behind the acreage that we have. I just think that that area is forgotten about a lot, and it's time for us to do the right thing and to take in consideration the places that we have not spent a lot of interest in and have gone down over the years that historically has built this place, the backbone of this place. And I think a lot of people do not know the history of that place, but it is the original place. It is Fairhope, to be honest, and we can't forget that. We must give back to that and pull it up to par and make the housing value increase, make the area increase as far as equity in their homes. You know, it brings a bridge to the community. We're also talking about putting a trail at the Rotary Center. I think it all connects. If we separate those things, then we've lost sight of the plan that we initially had as a comprehensive plan. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I'm Bob Keizer, 19213 Fairfax Drive. I'm also the chairman of the City Recreation Board. Representing the Recreation Board, I was in a couple months ago to address the council with our five-year plan, and we talked about the fact that we need additional recreation space. We are out of field space. We bought 40 acres about 10 years ago, actually for about $23,000 an acre, out on Manly Road in order to build additional playing fields. We did that. In the process of doing it, we had a new development come up right across the street from it, and we spent an extra million dollars because we're in the middle of a neighborhood. And we don't want ball fields in the middle of our neighborhood. So we've got an opportunity here, and part of what we talked about a couple months ago when we came in to talk to you was, we've got an opportunity to buy the land that we need to make up for the shortfall of recreational space and playing fields within this community. If you don't think we've got a problem, then you're not spending time out at our recreational fields because they are overrun every playing day. We've got an opportunity to acquire land, and no, it's not underneath the traffic pattern of the airport, but we've got an opportunity to acquire land that's not next to a development that we can develop as we need to in order to get the recreation space that we need. Now, when we came in and spoke two months ago, we talked about the need in the Twin Beach area for recreational space. But the lesson that we learned as we developed the Manly Road complex is, we don't need ball fields in the middle of a neighborhood. What we need in the Twin Beach area is a five-acre park that recognizes what that community needs, that's useful to that community, as opposed to a ball field complex that brings the traffic that everybody opposes. So we've got an opportunity here to acquire the land for the space that the Recreation Department needs that, when considered by the Recreation Board, was recommended unanimously. I would ask that you consider acquiring the land at the intersection of 13 and 32 to fulfill the recreational needs of this community, while at the same time, consider acquiring space in the Twin Beach area to construct a community park that will service that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keizer.
Francis Rip with a Rip Report. Nine, 16, 18, and 20. Nine, you know, if anybody wants to know why they didn't know about the insurance before, this has been the way things have been done for years. And all you have to do is look at number nine and look at what they're saying there, and it doesn't say anything about the insurance, the family insurance provided or anything. That's how come it got passed every year, because there was no transparency. Nobody knew about it. You all voted, as I understand, and approved an Auburn study that you were gonna wait on. Why in the world don't you wait on that before you make this decision? On 16, on 16, you're talking about 2.6 million. The backstory is this, you blew five, no, we don't even know how much money was blown on Manly Road. And if you want to know why there was a development next to it built, it's because when you bought the soccer fields, you facilitated the money for the developer to build that project. Then you spent a million and a half to grade it right because you did it right next to it, and now you have them right over the top of the ball field, and you're talking about it's in a neighborhood. Neighborhood wasn't there, but it is now. And also, when we bought those ball fields, we didn't buy them for soccer. We didn't buy them for anything. We drained every single recreation account we had and bought that property with no purpose. And then it sat there. So keep that in mind. The Marina thing, I'm wondering how the Marina, I never heard anything about the Marina deal coming up until it was there, and it's for the Fairhope Fire Department. I think they do a very good job. But again, the backstory to the Fire Department is, for the last, and I've been in this a long time, we never get anything from them as far as financials. I remember years ago, $800,000, $500,000 for this and that, and we would ask for some information on financials. We didn't get it. You guys are sitting in a budget meeting and scrutinizing every dime. I hadn't heard you say a word about the Fire Department or them, justifying their figures. In fact, we had the chief or whoever the fire representative was tell the mayor that he didn't have to give her any financials. And yet you're scrutinizing our tax dollars for them, so you're gonna reward them by giving them a tenure spot at the pier. I don't get it. Last thing, and also, the National Park Service did not recommend that piece of property. Again, you've got people telling you, you're looking for advice from people, and you disregard it. And you jump ahead and you do it yourself. The 2.6 mil, I'm sitting here listening to you guys in a work session talking about cutting charities out $5,000. You're getting an insurance package, and you're talking about buying $2.6 million worth of land, and last month you were gonna give away $20 million worth of land. I don't get it. Last, last but not least, the boutique hotel, there's a big difference in negotiation and blackmail. And you're on real thin ice. I'm gonna be watching that one.
I'm a past chairman of the rec board. I live at 15795 Danny Road. And I was chairman of the rec board at the time we bought the property on Manly Road. And yes, it was for soccer. It was designated for soccer. It was always talked about as soccer because baseball, football, the other places, they also wanted, so we tried to make accommodations. I sat here and I listened to this stuff, and the arguments and all, and I've been in the town since 1981. I was postmaster for 23 years. I love this town. All this bickering and all, 100, what's the difference between 113 acres and 114 acres when it's actually a 113.7? Half truths. Come on, people. Think about what's going on, and it's, don't say it's one side or the other side or whatever. We gotta do what's best for families. Right now, it's best for the kids and for families, for recreation. It's 513.7 acres out there. That would give us room to expand for the next 23 years. I mean, I've been doing this now since I made the cut off at 81. We talked about the community, and my pops said, he and I was part of it, and somebody talked to him. We had put money in that park for years and years, and then it hasn't been followed up since we've been here, or doing it right. I think it's time to do it. I'm sorry, but it just, it just, it just makes sense doing this town. We did spend $23,000 roughly an acre when we bought Twin Beach Road, the Manly property, which is about what you're asking now. The appraisal, I don't know that we had an appraisal done, and you talk about appraisal. It's what somebody's willing to sell their land for. Somebody could come in and tell me that my appraisal of my house is $10, and I say, I want 12. I mean, if you were buying my house, you'd pay me 12. I just, I want you guys to think about the kids and think about recreation, the seniors. There's not a whole lot of kids here. I've got as many of you that are below the bill probably toward the youngest person in the population still. And we are proud to have you on our board. But just think about it. We've got to do it. And this delaying it, delaying it, why do we keep delaying things? Nothing ever gets done. Right now, we need to be doing something to move on recreation because we've got needs, we've got people with no place to play. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langham.
While she's walking up, I do want to mention that we do have an opportunity to purchase property to increase the capacity at Valenta, and we have another opportunity too. So, you know, rushing into this purchase, nothing happened between ordering the appraisal and then approving the purchase. That's the issue here. Also, the fact that the appraisal did not come through. It's valued way higher than the Twin Beach, and it's in town.
Well, we'll address that. I'm gonna give quite a few details. It's gonna contradict quite a bit of what you've heard, and I can't wait to share all of this with you, so, yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Clarice Hall Black, and my address is 18674 Twin Beach Road. Okay. So, my family has been in this community since 1820, and I have been here for 44 years. And it's apparent to me that anything dealing with Twin Beach Road is pretty much ignored, whether that's the park, the sewage, whatever it may be. And we're getting kind of fed up with it. You have the opportunity to give back to the community. If you don't want the park, then take the money and do something else with it, like updating the current parks we have, the tennis, we have tennis courts, we have, at the football stadium, we have, what are those, baseball courts there along with the football field. We have the soccer fields that are currently built on the thing I saw where you're gonna put lacrosse out there. Half the soccer field that's out there isn't even used. We were out there, what, just in the spring of the year, and I'm like, it's empty. Then on top of that, right, I guess it's at Manly where everybody's talking about, you have the soccer and the softball fields. You can actually take those soccer fields off and expand that out. I feel like if the National Park Service actually came out, and this is their job, is to tell you what is more feasible based upon the comprehensive plan, then that's probably where we need to be. Because what you're doing, we're all reacting, it's my money, it's a taxpayer's money, it should be what we want, not what you deem as important, having backroom meetings and all this crap. I'm so tired of what's going on. You guys need to grow up because you are here to take care of us. We put you in office. We apparently need to take you out of office. This is getting ridiculous. So you need to get it together, figure out what it is, and if you can't figure it out, ditch the whole effort and fix the sewage.
Thank you. Okay, I will close public participation, and we will move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
How's everybody doing? To the young lady that was just, just up here, could you, can I ask you a question, if you don't mind? And tell me your name again, I'm so sorry. Clarice, Clarice, where did you get the impression that the decision for this parkland was made behind closed doors?
That's what, from years and years of my family, that's just what they pass down. That is how the council works when something that they need to happen.
And I completely can understand that, but to borrow a phrase from the mayor, we don't need to look at things anymore as they've always been done this way, so they must be done that way now. Everything that was done for the purchase of this property happened at a public rec board meeting, or it was discussed in this meeting, both in a open work session, open and recorded, and in this meeting. And I'm not trying to point it out, but I just want to use that as a perfect example of really what I want to talk about next. You can tell that we are less than 12 months from another election. In the past several weeks to one month, there have been multiple critical posts, articles, blogs, whatever you want to call it, making political issues out of what used to be and what in a normal year would be a non-issue. And it's unfortunate. And I am so thankful that we have so many people show up to the meeting tonight because it is important to get the information directly from the source. You shouldn't find out what happened at a council meeting based on something that I interpret for you. You shouldn't get your interpretation of a council meeting from something the mayor posed for you. Watch the meetings. Come to the meetings. Get the information for yourself. Decide how you feel about it for yourself. Don't let somebody else tell you how to feel about it. Come get the information straight from the source. In this next year, you're gonna read, you're gonna hear, you're gonna be told a lot of nasty things that unfortunately aren't gonna be true. I can promise you this, you won't hear any of that from me. Not a negative post, not a negative comment, because I've learned there is no productivity in that. It's not what the, it's not what the community wants, it's not what they need, and it's definitely not what you deserve. We were all elected to do one job, to serve this community in any way that it needs and to hopefully leave it in a better condition than when we took office. And that doesn't just mean infrastructure and financials. Those are important, and they should be that way. But it also involves and includes reputation. And I am very hopeful that we can finish better than we started. And I challenge everybody to spend the next year not looking for personal or political gain. Let's focus on what the community needs and how we can better serve everybody. Not ourself, not a certain group of people, but everybody. We all work for the city of Fairhope. It doesn't matter, or it shouldn't matter, who gets the credit or who gets the blame as long as the city succeeds. It will be interesting to see over the next year who is willing to put the city's needs above their own and figure out a way to do the job we were elected to do in a way that reflects the reputation we all want for Fairhope. I'm hopeful that we can do that. I plan on doing it. And that's all I've got on that issue. I appreciate it. I want to recognize Tom Cool for his many years of service to the city. Tom has the, also has the pleasure of being head of our Parks and Recreation Department. Tom has the, also has the pleasure of being head of our Parks and Recreation Department, who way back when initiated the search for recreational parkland. Thank you for that, Tom, I appreciate it. It is desperately needed, and I've got a lot of things to say about some of the specific issues that were raised, but I'm going to save mine for when those issues come up on the agenda. That's all I've got, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, I've got a lot of comments that I will also save until we get to the individual items on the agenda, but I did want to say, I went to the Fairhope football game Friday night, it was a tough loss, but wanted to point out that I saw the school resource officers out there, and just the amount of connections that they have made with the students. I mean, I think that that has been a tremendous thing. Chief, congrats to your, to your team out there. I mean, kids were coming up to them nonstop the entire game, and I think that that's going to make a huge difference in the community year over year, and I just appreciate what y'all do. So, that's all I had for now.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, there's a referendum next Tuesday, September seventeenth, for a three mil property tax increase if you live in the Fairhope feeder pattern, not just in the Fairhope city limits. You have the opportunity to cast your vote for this referendum. If you need more information, there's a town hall meeting at the library at six o'clock this Thursday. That's all I have.
Councilman Boone?
The only thing I have is I would appreciate everybody coming out to the meeting tomorrow night on the tenth for the overlay district at the planning zoning meeting. I'd like to give a little shout out for that. There's been a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of stuff going on. I think you can get your answers and if you have, bring the questions to the meeting, I'm sure there'll be an answer for you, but I would encourage everyone to come and attend that meeting. Five o'clock, five o'clock tomorrow right here in the council chambers. Thank you.
I may revisit some of these subjects, but I am going to because there's a lot of people here for the Twin Beach property and the, to discuss that versus the property out on thirteen and thirty-two. And I'd like to set the record straight, just give you citizens an idea of what really transpired on that. The rec department came to us and said that they needed additional lands. The mayor and staff found the land on Twin Beach, sold the council on the idea that it would be a boost to the community that we should purchase that land. No doubt, we were all on board with it. So, we authorized the mayor to go out and negotiate for the purchase, and she came back with the price, and the price was forty-eight thousand dollars an acre. And we said, "All right, well, do we know what it's really worth? Maybe it'd be wise, this is the taxpayer's money, let's get an appraisal on it." So we had an appraisal done. I think, Councilman Conyers, did you have something to do with picking, tell me how that works on that appraisal process again?
So on the appraisal, rather than engaging an appraiser directly, I suggested that we go through an appraisal management company just to kind of have a further arms length.
They pick someone, right? Nobody up here even knows who they're going to pick, you don't have a say, we don't have a say. I couldn't even remember who it was.
Yeah, not until they either complete the appraisal or contact us, but that way we're not handpicking an appraisal.
I don't even know who did the first appraisal. They came back, and the Twin Beach land appraised at thirty-five thousand dollars. So the, the asking price of forty-eight thousand was roughly thirty-eight percent higher than the appraised value. And we thought, "That's quite a bit more than, you know, we should spend with the taxpayer's money." But we didn't stop and give up. We asked mayor and staff to go back to the property owner and see if they could negotiate a better price, which they did do, and they did not budge on the price. So the price of land remained at forty-eight thousand. In the meantime, knowing that we needed land desperately, as the rec board members here testified, we started searching for more land. It came to the council's attention that there was roughly a hundred and fourteen acres there at the northwest corner of thirteen and thirty-two, not directly in the flight path of the airport, but also in a mostly uninhabited area. It is exactly one-half mile from the soccer complex. The topography of this land is fantastic for any number of ball fields. The, you could drive between one large existing recreational complex and this land. If you're, if you're driving at thirty miles an hour, it'll take you exactly one minute to drive. So the proximity to existing recreational lands appealed to us as well. The council, in an open meeting, nothing was done behind closed doors, selected me to go negotiate for the, a purchase price subject to council approval. We came back with a price, a negotiated price, which was several hundred thousand dollars less than the asking price, and I believe that was three point two-five million dollars. But we didn't stop there, we said, "Well, we had an appraisal done at Twin Beach, let's get an appraisal done on this. If we're going to do our due diligence there, let's do it here." Once again, went through the same selection process to choose an appraiser. You know, Mayor, I know that you had your own ideas of the appraisal, all we can do are go by, go by what the experts say the appraised value is. No offense to you, you are not an appraiser. The appraisal came back at two point three-seven million dollars. We had offered three point two-five. So we said, "Well, that's not going to work." That's amazingly thirty-eight percent, the same number. So, it, we, you know, we tried to negotiate, they wouldn't budge. We even had our director of operations come in here at the last council meeting and said, "You better be thinking about another sewer facility because somebody's going to buy that land and develop it." So whether that was true or whether that was a ploy to try to get the city off the fence, I don't know. I did ask the question. So we had an executive session after the last meeting. I gauged council support for that price. There was not a lot of support at that price. So, you know, still under council authority to go and negotiate a price. Went back to the owner, I said, "You're going to have to do better than that." He came back, he came all the way down, he came down another six hundred thousand dollars. We were willing to pay three point two-five, but it didn't appraise for that. He came back at two point six-five. I felt like that was a close enough price that it deserved to be considered, so I put it on the agenda for a vote. This vote will take place in an open meeting. When things are done behind closed doors, you buy land and you don't talk about it. We've talked about it in work sessions, council meetings, executive session, and here again tonight, you're having an opportunity to share. The Twin Beach property would be forty acres for one point nine-two million. This is a hundred and fourteen acres, which I would say would keep the city's recreational needs satisfied, not for twenty or thirty years, but I would say for the next one hundred years. And if we're worried about growth of the city, think about you taking off property that would amount to another five hundred plus probably home sites there. That's a benefit as well. We're not, we're not crowding out, we're not developing every piece of property available. It takes it off the market. The mayor actually put forth a plan for paying for the Twin Beach property. She mentioned impact fees, and I would assume we would do the exact same methods for paying for this land. So to say we don't have a plan, we're not adopting that plan tonight, that's not being considered. We will vote on an approval or denial of the purchase. And then I asked the treasurer last week to start looking at options of how we were going to fund it. I got accused by the mayor of doing something illegal for asking the treasurer, who's appointed by the council, to look at, at numbers. Mayor, please. So that's kind of the long and short of it. The difference is about point seven million dollars, but we're, if we were to purchase this, we're to get seventy-four acres additional. This is not an affront to the people of Twin Beach, it's a matter of economics. Forty-eight thousand versus twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars an acre. I'm just looking at the economics of it here and the needs, and you can't argue that the, that the land on thirty-two and thirteen is in a bad location or has bad topo or any of that. You just can't argue against it. The rec board has recommended that would be the desired location. So I'll stop my comments there, and as we touch on some of these other items, I'm going to talk a little bit more, have some remarks on those, such as the compensation. I will point out just one little thing. There's nothing hidden about it. Section four of the ordinance says the mayors and members of the city council have the option of participating in the city of Fairhope's group health insurance plan, option one, with no monthly payment. I don't, I don't know that you can be any more descriptive than that.
There's no value on it.
Okay, didn't have the value on there, maybe we should put the value on there, we're talking about it now. It's, I mean, most people have, but the value, Mayor, I'll go into that a little bit. You said seventeen thousand dollars. I'm not exactly sure where that came from, and it's a little more than that. I'm going to round it down, divided by twelve months is fourteen hundred and seventeen dollars a month. I don't know of a single insurance plan for a family that we would have to pay fourteen hundred and seventeen dollars a month, so I don't really know where that valuation comes from. If you take the amount of money that we spent in twenty-eighteen, which was about three point six million dollars, and you divide it by the number of subscribers that we had, which was about three hundred and forty-one, the total value is about ten thousand plus or minus, a little over ten thousand dollars, and that's what I've always been told. But that's not necessarily the true benefit either, because my job in and of itself, I can take insurance, insurance through my company, and I would pay about four thousand dollars a year. So my benefit is four thousand, and oh, by the way, my deduction or my, my company insurance is less, my copayments are less, so that benefit to me is lower and lower and lower. So it's below four thousand dollars. So, you know, you can spend this any way that you would like, you put seventeen thousand, you put twelve thousand, you put ten thousand on it. You know, we're classified as a part-time job, just as the mayor is mayor. Nobody in this city believes, nobody in the city believes that your job is a part-time job. We all know it's a full-time job, and so is being a city council member. We don't go anywhere without having to work. So, you know, I'm not certain when this was, I'm glad I'm used to you. I, I'm not certain when this was given as a benefit to the council members. When I came in office in two thousand and twelve, it was a benefit then. We let it remain as a benefit. I don't believe in taking, we've never taken a benefit away from anyone, so nobody thought to take the benefit away. Besides, this is for the next council. None of these people up here may be sitting here. We're not voting on anything for ourselves, we're voting on the next generation. You can look at the council salaries in Baldwin County. Daphne's is almost double the city of Fairhope's council salaries. Spanish Fort, much smaller city, is even higher. Foley and Gulf Shores is nearly double. Orange Beach is triple the salary of a Fairhope city council member. So no, we're not going to be the highest paid. It's a two hundred dollar a month raise that we're asking for. The amount of benefit that a person would get, including yourself, Mayor, varies. It varies by individual. So let's, I want to, I want to set the facts straight. There are, you know, and many of these, Daphne, Spanish Fort, Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, Alexander City, Opalica, Decatur, now I don't really like to compare the big cities, Huntsville, Pensacola, Florida, Panama City, all are given the option to participate in insurance. I can't tell you what that number is or what that monthly cost would be. They're all given the opportunity, they're all part-time jobs, so I want to set the record straight on that as well. The only true raise that's being proposed is a two hundred dollar a month raise for council members. That's the only raise that's being proposed. With that, I'll close. Council comments?
I am going to respond since you said that you were going to have so many things contrary.
Mayor, I gave you, you spoke for about thirty-five minutes during your mayor comments, and.
If we're getting rid of the purchase, two point six million dollars, this definitely needs to be addressed.
You attacked the city council for an hour and a half at the last meeting, you attacked us for thirty minutes tonight, and if we can just please move on with the meeting.
Mayor, I'm perfectly fine with you giving your response. Can we just save?
Councilman Robinson, Councilman Robinson, Councilman Robinson, you're out of order. I'm presiding over this meeting.
You are ridiculous. You are ridiculous.
Yes, we're going to keep order, we're going to keep order.
Dictator.
No, ma'am, we're going to move on. No, ma'am, I'm sorry. You know, you have to preside with order in this meeting, and I will give her an opportunity when it, when the appropriate time comes. We did not interrupt her one single time during her entire comments, but we can't speak without being interrupted. Now, we're going to move on with this meeting. Item five is the final adoption of zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three, amendment to that, request to rezone the property of Fairhope Single Tax Corporation and provision investments from R two medium-density single-family residential district to B four business and professional district. Property is generally located at ninety-nine seventy-nine Windmill Road in Fairhope, Alabama. The parcel contains one point four-eight acres, more or less. Yes, sir.
Evening, council, council president, mayor. My name's Mike Jeffries, working the Planning and Zone Department as a city planner. As you said, this is a request to rezone from R two medium-density single-family residential to B four business and professional district. We brought this up at the last council meeting, it was held over for tonight. Of the property across the street, just as they know some of the history around the property, was on the northeast corner, was rezoned in two thousand and seventeen from R two to B four. The property just south of this property across the street is a commercially zoned PUD that has the same office, business office, professional use, and a catty corner across this property is currently unincorporated, unzoned Baldwin County property that is home to a restaurant currently. This case was heard at the July first regular meeting, Planning Commission meeting. Staff's recommendation was for approval for rezoning from R two to B four. Planning Commission's recommendation was approval for R two medium-density single-family residential district to B four business and professional district with unanimous vote. Staff'd be happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
Counsel, any questions for staff? I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, do you call a question?
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item six is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend, ordinance number sixteen thirty-one to extend the moratorium on the filing of rezoning. Site plan approval and multiple occupancy project applications within the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope through and including December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. This was introduced at the August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen city council meeting.
And council president, thank you, sir. Council members, good evening. And this is in support of the Greeno Road Corridor Overlay Districts that are working their way through the Planning Commission at this time. This moratorium that's currently in place would expire October first. By extending it to the end of this calendar year, it gives the council the opportunity to act upon that document when it makes its way from Planning Commission to the council. And Councilman Boone, thank you for announcing for everyone the special called meeting that'll be held tomorrow night just for the Greeno Road Corridor Overlay. Thank you very much for that, and council members, I'm happy to answer questions from staff.
Okay, any questions for staff, counsel? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If you'll call the question, clerk?
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number seven is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning, amend ordinance number nine fifty-three and to repeal and replace ordinance six seventy-five, seven fifteen, fourteen eleven, and fourteen twenty-two, an amending chapter twenty-one, article four, sewer, replacing section twenty-one dash fifty-two connection requirements and connection fees.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson? This was introduced at the last meeting. Pretty much changes the connection fees that are shown before you. I guess I don't hear any questions.
Make a motion and we approve.
Okay, have a motion for final adoption?
Second.
Have a motion in a second for final adoption. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think I forwarded an email to a couple of council members from, fellow home builder, he was saying that this could have some negative effect about people, you know, going, putting in a well or subject tank versus tying into, to city, but I think, I think the benefits of this outweigh the, the negative smaller recourse we might have.
Well, are you saying?
No, I was just, no, I wasn't talking, I was just, the other council member, I think I sent it to one or two council members, just, I don't remember.
I'll be happy to address any concerns anybody's got about anybody connecting to water.
So, but you, you still are in support of that?
Yeah, still in support, just.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call a question?
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a final adoption of an ordinance to establish monthly salary for the mayor and council members. City of Fairhope Code of Ordinance, Section 2-21. If you look back on your tab there, you see that the mayor's salary, which is currently at $32,400, raised $85,000. Council members are currently making $9,600. That would be raised to 12,000. The council president, which makes $100 a month more, would be raised from 10,800 to 13,200. Would have the health insurance plan, and it repeals the previous ordinance. Mayor Wilson, was this one of the items that you wanted to address?
All I will say with this is that all of the comps that you gave were just the salary. And the benefits package is not defined in any of these comps. And the benefits package is 55%.
We'll go back to eight.
Of this.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
I was just saying that the benefits package is 55% this term of the whole benefit. And the comps that have been given tonight are not defined what the insurance is. I mean, it could be, they can participate in single insurance, but what do they pay? None of that was defined.
At the end of my comments, I made the comment that I didn't know exactly what the value of that insurance plan was.
But shouldn't we find that out?
But I can tell you, you take Orange Beach, for instance, is 27,500. That would take the salary of our council plus the insurance benefit and equal that for a city that has maybe 8,000, 10,000 people. So there are some examples in here, if you look at this spreadsheet, where even if you use that $17,000 number.
It's 15,576 as of 2019. That was the free Fairhope, free family insurance benefit. And that is defined by our treasurer, who reconciles it at the end of each year.
All right, counsel. Any comments before I ask for a motion?
Yeah. Well, Jimmy, do you mind? I'm sorry. I'm not really sure where to start. Kim, I guess I've got a question for you to start. When we're discussing the, the value of the healthcare coverage that we receive, that as the mayor explained, I think there is a total number for family coverage that is sort of equally apportioned to everybody who receives it. And that, and they're just sort of given an average number. And that's how that cost is assigned. Is that right?
So the, the cost is actually assigned by the actuaries that go through and look at, you know, what is recommended for family coverage and what's recommended for single coverage. And so the number that I gave her was based on the family coverage recommended rate that we put into our fund to cover claims.
Sure.
So that's what you're wanting to know?
I am, I am. Because my, my point is, that is, that is an estimated number, correct? It's not an actual expense.
It comes close to our expense. You want to hope that number is equal to, or maybe a little below, to cover those claims.
Right. And I think what you're saying is, the way I understand it is, that number counts, we put that money aside every month, that 1,400 and some odd dollars, in the event that me or my family go to seek medical treatment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if that 1,400 is set aside in a month for me, for example, and my family doesn't go to the doctor that month, there's been no expense for me that month, correct?
Right. It's put into a pool.
That's right.
It's a pool to pay for all employees and retirees and council member that's on that. It's all one pool.
Correct. And so we might allocate that 1,400 a month. But if I don't go to the doctor or my family doesn't seek medical treatment, the city hasn't paid any money for that, correct? Since we're self-insured.
That's correct.
Okay. You know, one of the things the mayor said in her comments originally is that, and I'm sorry, Kim, that was the only question. You're more than welcome to stand there, but I won't, I won't make it. Is that this, this is a service-oriented job. And I can promise you, if you're signing up for the extra $200 that we're proposing tonight, you're not going to do it very long. This is, you shouldn't do this unless you intend and desire to serve your community. You know, I have no problem waiting for the Auburn study to come back. Because frankly, I think, because, because in all honesty, I expect them to come back with a higher number than what's on the agenda for tonight. But you know what? If they do, I think we deny that because you don't want to make this position about the money. You want to make it about community service. And so my expectation, and Jimmy's done the research, but my expectation with this $200 was that we were simply trying to get to where the other municipalities in Baldwin County were. Nothing nefarious about it, nothing behind closed doors. I know that Jimmy has mentioned it in meetings at least a dozen times over the last two years. I'm sorry?
You're working here in Fairhope, not on Beach, Gulf Shores, Daphne, and we're all.
That's right. But you, in making any decision...
It's a service-oriented job, and it should come with a volunteer spirit.
I think it's exactly my point. I, I think we're on the same page. But you have to use these comps in deciding what's a fair salary, what's a fair amount. Because even though it is community oriented and it should be service oriented, you have to at least appeal to a certain amount of people who want to run for this position. And that's, I think, all this is.
Just the benefits package is part of the comp study. If somebody gets single insurance and they have to pay a premium every month, that is a different value than getting free family insurance. You go to the doctor, we get very good rates on our prescriptions. I can tell you right now, it's a huge benefit. All taxpayer funded. And I appreciate that you would wait, wait for an Auburn study because I do think that that would be an unbiased way to, to look at other municipalities. And, but they, they have a way that they can value not just the salary, but the complete package. And I think that would be fair.
Councilman Conyers?
So I've got quite a few comments because I did take the lead on, on this proposal. First, also like Councilwoman Robinson, I don't have a problem waiting for the Auburn study. I didn't realize that that would include assessing, or assessing council and mayor. So that's one reason I would have proceeded without that. But I have been talking about doing this for probably a year, a year and a half. I mean, I wanted to get this done way in advance of the next election cycle because I did not want this to be done, we, we have to do it six months prior to the election. And I didn't want to even have it anywhere close to that date because I didn't want it to become a political issue, which it has. So I, I think to clarify, I did the research on this. And I started out solely trying to determine what kind of salary we should be paying a mayor. The City of Fairhope, as, as mayor, Mayor Wilson will attest, she works, I'm sure, well over 40 hours a week. By definition, we have a part-time mayor. I know that's not at all what, what you work, but to go to a full-time mayor would actually take a vote among, from the citizens, a legislative act. And so what we do is we acknowledge the fact that we have a part-time mayor by definition. However, we're asking this person and expecting this person to work full-time hours. The compensation last term was 32,400, or going into this term, 32,400 for the mayor's salary, with an additional 60,000 being paid to be the superintendent of utilities. The mayor opted to not, to not take that additional 60,000 for being superintendent of utilities because she wanted to put that towards hiring an operations director of utilities. But at the time she did that, and I, I think you may have done the right thing with that, but she also came back and wanted a salary increase and didn't realize that we weren't able to do that until the next term.
That's not true. I said that in order to attract good people in the future, I'd already campaigned that I'm only taking that. And thank God, there's a video of this whole thing. I said that I don't want to take this salary because it's double dipping, as, as far as I'm concerned. And that when you vote on a next salary, it should be for a full-time mayor. That's exactly what I stated. I have an old post that says exactly that, too. I'll send it to you.
Okay. I would like to see that. The, the salary, so anyways, salary for the mayor and the council. I started off, I researched, I guess I've got 17 municipalities that I, that I reached out to, got their mayor's salary. Fairhope was the third lowest paying mayor's salary and the third lowest paying council salary. And what happened is, when I was doing this work, they all gave me the council information as well. So I went ahead and compiled it all. And I said, okay, well, 32,400, you know, we're expecting this mayor to work full-time. 32,400, that's not realistic for all that's expected of them. And we discussed it in multiple meetings. You know, where we landed, we, we just, everyone threw out some different ideas and ultimately said, well, why don't you just come back with a recommendation? I recommended 85,000 for the mayor's salary. Now, the mayor also has the same insurance benefit, free family coverage. The council, I drug my feet on this a little bit because I hesitated whether I even wanted to propose a raise for the council, even though we're one of the lowest paid among the county. I ultimately decided, you know, $200 a month, that gets it to an even $1,000 a month. That still puts us on the low end of, of things, but it puts us in line with other, some of the other municipalities in Baldwin County, most of which allow you to participate in their insurance, albeit the majority of them are not free family coverage. I would agree with that. There are one or two, I think, that are fully funded by the municipality. So you know, at the end of the day, I'd be willing to wait for the Auburn study, but I would almost, almost guarantee that it will come back at a much higher number than $12,000. And then, you know, we can, we can see what we want to do. And yes, it's, this position is something you do as a servant. But if people want to do this job for free, then I think you also have something to be concerned about. Hey, I'm, I'm serious. If somebody's doing this for free, I don't know many people that would put up with everything that you got to put up with to be on the council or the mayor for free. If you're doing it for free, I'd be worried that you're making money some other way. That's all I'm saying. So you know, I'm fine if y'all want to wait and, and have the Auburn study include this. That's perfectly fine with me. Again, I took the lead on this because I wanted this done way in advance of, of the next election cycle. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Councilman Brown or Boone, comments?
Nope. I think Jimmy's done the legwork. I mean, with the sheet, other municipalities.
Councilman Boone, any comments?
No.
Okay.
Everything's been said.
All right, counsel. I will entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? I just want to say that, you know, I, I think it gets more political as we get closer and closer to February. And the Auburn study, like, like Councilman Conyers said, I did not realize, and I'm still not certain, that it includes compensation studies for elected officials. That's a totally different animal. Can you confirm that it does?
I already did.
Okay. Was that, was that included? I, I...
I have the 2012 study. I mean, they, they can do, they're including this in our job descriptions with all of our personnel.
Eighteen months away.
All right. Any further comments, counsel? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you call the question? Did, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
I was, I was hoping we could discuss a, a motion to table until February of 2020. I mean, you know, if, if the study's going to come back and include this...
We can ask them to do that part first.
I mean, and if it's not done by 2020...
That's another, that's another concern.
Then we come back and vote as is.
We could amend it. If the study comes back before February 2020, we'll amend it.
Well, we have to consider the motion on the table unless the one that made the motion wants to withdraw it. Okay. Clerk, if you'll call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
No.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Let's go back to item eight. Boy, it was certain to read just like seven, so I skipped over it. I'm sorry. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 953 and to repeal and replace ordinance 675, 1196, and 1217, amending Chapter 21, Article 3, water replacing Section 21-32 connection fees and expenses. So, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Peterson? Is he still in here? Oh, there he is. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions, two seconds again. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item two is a final adoption of an ordinance to establish and adopt Fairhope Public Utilities Electric Service Standards with the service territory of the City of Fairhope. Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Council President, Council Mayor. My name's Mike Allison. I'm the superintendent of the electric department. We have before you an ordinance to establish service standards for how we would like services to be built within our service territory and establish some ground rules just to lay down so it's, eliminates some confusion on how we're building services. So I'm here if y'all have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Allison, counsel? Okay. Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Mike, electrical contractors being notified of this, that they're licensed in the city?
We have been talking to them all along. I haven't officially sent out a notification of it coming up, but it's been in the public forums and on the agendas, things like that.
All right.
So it's kind of how we've been, how we've unofficially been doing it. We're just codifying it now.
Mr. Allison, I'm going to call the question. And if you'll stay at the podium for a minute, I want to make a, a comment about an unrelated subject, but it just, I just thought of it. So after we take this vote, I want to, I need to run something by you, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. What I want to remind, remind you of is that we're having these, the 5G technology that's coming down the pike, and, and these small cell towers are going to be coming at us at light speed, and we really need to get back on, we, we kind of talked about it a little bit, we need to get back on an ordinance to concerning the small cell towers. I know that some other local municipalities have adopted that legislation, but, and, and the, the thought is, is that we may have, I'm going to call them towers, but that's not a real good description, micro towers on utility poles that have to be placed, I believe, as, as near as every two-hundred feet.
It's appearing on the technology.
And before we start putting poles up every two-hundred feet in the city, we really need to think really hard about that. And, and, you know, it's typical that the city, they're using the right ways, that you get some revenue per pole, we, we really need to wrap that up soon before it gets out ahead of us.
I agree. We, I know Eric has been working and some others have been working on a, on a zoning ordinance for that. I'm also looking at the attachment policy, updating what we have and kind of modernizing it, and that's going to be the next thing I bring before you guys.
Okay. And I would have brought this up in a work session if we had time, but thank you for-
No worries.
Thank you, Councilman Barron.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item eleven is a resolution, the City Council approves resolution thirty-two forty-six dash eighteen, be amended for the procurement of one automated side loader refuse truck for the Public Works Department. This is a three-year lease to purchase, lease to own purchase, including freight for a total buy in amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand nine-hundred and twelve dollars. Is Mr. Johnson here, if anybody has any questions? Kim, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Creedge or Mr. Johnson?
This is one where it's a way for procure the lease.
Okay. Councilman Conyers, have you looked into these terms? Feel comfortable with this now?
I, I have, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right. And just if anybody wants to know, it's within two-thousand dollars of, of the budgeted amount for that. Okay, if nobody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item twelve is a resolution to award bid number thirty-seven dash nineteen for Jalen Make Mills with American Wholesale Grocery, option one, or delivery and Winn-Dixie option to pick up as per the required bid specifications with the cost and the amount of their unit bid prices. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item thirteen is a resolution to award bid number forty dash nineteen for Will Abandonment Services to DW Drilling LLC with a total bid proposal of twenty-six thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to award the bid?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Getting ahead of us, this is the 2020 budget item. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, bid is awarded. Thank you, council. Item fourteen is a resolution, the City Council approves Dewberry Engineers for an increase to the professional engineering services for project number two on Bayou Drive, Fairwood Boulevard, and the Fairhope Avenue Transmission System due to revising the contract language by removing the "not to exceed" phrase and using percent construction cost and correct the resolution verbiage to match the contract language. It authorizes Mayor Wilson to execute amendment number one to the contract with a percent construction cost of thirty-one thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents to determine the fees for the engineers represented in the contract, thereby increasing the new estimated total amount for the project to be two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And I want to hats off to whoever wrote that resolution. Should we do that? Okay, I'll do that. All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this new cost.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm still trying to find, it's, so it's changed by thirty-one thousand, is that, is that right? Okay. All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions for staff on this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item fifteen is a resolution, the City of County, City Council approves amendment number one to the contract and amending resolution number thirty-nine-seven dash eighteen for professional engineering services for Sawgrass Consulting LLC for wastewater collection and transmission system improvements for project one, the Church Street Outfall Transmission System, and correct the resolution to read at an estimated cost of one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and remove the "not to exceed" phrase, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract amendment number one. Entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item sixteen is a resolution, the City Council desires to have and make available for public use additional recreation land or other purposes, and the City Council has searched for available lands and negotiated for the purchase of recreational lands in the City of Fairhope by way of the City Council, hereby conditionally agrees to purchase one thousand fourteen acres of land located at the northwest corner of County Road thirteen and thirty-two, and authorizes Council President Burrell to negotiate the terms and conditions of the final purchase agreement contingent on, but not limited to, a satisfactory Phase One environmental site assessment. The amount of purchase agreement shall be two million six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purchase of the property located at eighty-eight seventy-five County Road thirty-two, and the closing date shall be on or before November fifteenth, twenty-nineteen. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second.
I was going to say something, and you said I could say-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there are two sales, and I can show you these, that are for comps. Do y'all agree that you can't use a comp if it's a pending sale?
Mayor, I just relied on the professionals and what they did-
You can't.
And had to assume that they did the best thing.
And then the other one-
I also, I'm not bringing up the fact that I heard that the parcel Catty Corner was sold to a family member, therefore they sold it at a greatly reduced price, but I'm not throwing that in there to try to say, well, it should be higher.
There's one in here-
I can only go by what a professional tells me because I'm not a-
Well, I was just going to say too, that one of the comps is a listing. I mean, maybe council is acceptable of this, but have you ever had an appraisal done where you have a pending purchase, and this is from July, September, there's still no record, and a listing? The other two comps sold for less than fifteen thousand dollars an acre and a little over twelve thousand dollars an acre, but he did adjust those to seventeen thousand five hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred. I'm just, what is the rush? Why can't we have somebody evaluate this appraisal?
My personal rush is that this, the land's going to slip away, and it could, it's secure land for a hundred years.
I think anybody that pays fifty-five percent over value is not going to slip away.
But wait, that's your, that's your appraised value, which you are not an appraiser, the appraiser who did this is a commercial appraiser, an MAI appraiser, that's the highest certification you can have. We ordered it through another company that's, that reviewed it.
I'm mind-boggled, I really am.
I, I'm just saying, look, I'm not, I'm not good with the fact that we're paying more than appraised value, but I'm just trying to clarify some things that are not accurate, what you're saying. The appraised value was, sixteen thousand is not what the appraisal says, that's what your calculation is.
That's what the, that's what the sale is. There's only two comps that actually sold.
But I, I do see appraisals from time to time that include listings and pending sales.
I can tell you right now-
I work at a bank, I know a little bit about it.
That there were plenty of comps for Twin Beach, and a lot of them weren't even in the same area. There are comps that could be used for this. A pending sale and a listing is not acceptable. I mean, city attorney, can you, want to wage in on this?
Uh, actually, yeah, you did, you had a comment. What was the comment you just made?
What was the company that we ordered it through, Jimmy? I'm sorry, the-
Equity Valuation Partners.
And that's a third-party independent-
Appraisal Management.
It doesn't matter.
And then they asked the appraiser to do the appraisal.
Correct.
That equity partners actually underwrites the opinion of the appraiser, so it's a double check on what-
Correct.
-the appraiser does. And it-
Well, I, I sent it to Ken Watson, who is our planning attorney. He's the one that y'all might have heard before, he's highly intelligent, and this is his business. He looks at thousands of appraisals, and just looking at it and asking these questions, he said, this is not right.
Um, Mayor, Mayor, I'm, I'm glad you brought up Ken, because when we were discussing the Twin Beach property earlier-
This is not about Twin Beach, this is about spending six, two-point-six-five million dollars-
Let him finish, please, let him have the floor, please.
This isn't about Twin Beach.
I know, but, but, but we're discussing both pieces of property in the same discussion as, as to, as, as if we're choosing one over the other. We, we did originally agree to purchase the Twin Beach property at that, at their asking price, or we authorized a, a study to be done to see whether it was worth the money. And it was forty-eight thousand, that was the asking price. The appraisal came back at thirty-five thousand an acre. The mayor tasked Mr. Watson, in that case, just like in this one, to, to review the appraisal because she thought it should be higher. Ken did that, and I had a long discussion with about, with it, with him about it, and in fact, Ken came back and said the appraisal was wrong. It actually should appraise for a lot less than the thirty-five thousand.
So we can trust him.
Um, and so my point is-
He said this one is not a good appraisal.
Mayor, I'm, I am, I am trying to be very respectful of you by not interrupting, and I-
You interrupted me because I wasn't finished. I'm trying to ask that the people who, anybody who's had an appraisal, nobody uses a listing and a pending sale for a comp.
Councilman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, you know, and I said this back when we discussed the Twin Beach property. I was excited about the opportunity to buy it, I thought it would be great for the community and great for the city as a whole. As the rec board liaison, I know firsthand how bad the city needs recreational property, not only by my time on the board, but because I have young children in these parks, and I'm there every day, every night. I see that we're bursting at the seams. And so, you know, when we discussed the Twin Beach piece, my comment was, you know, I, I understand the need, I understand the desire to purchase, and even in certain circumstances, you can pay above appraised value. But, but how much is too much above appraised value? I said it then, is it five percent, is it ten percent, is it fifteen percent? I don't know. I'm, and, and I, I'm not comfortable making that decision without more information. And, and as much as I want this property for the Recreation Department, I feel the same way about this one. You know, we're paying above appraised value, how much is too much? I don't know. Um, you know, if you, you know, I've spoken to a lot of people about it in the last couple of weeks, they think this is a slant, this, this price is a steal. Maybe it is. The appraiser thinks it's a little high for the property. So I'm really torn, you know, I, I, I mean, there is a need desperately for, for recreational property in this city, but I'm not sure the price is right on this.
Okay, we're still in comments?
Yeah, I guess my, my additional comments would be, that, you know, we have, I, I'd be in favor of purchasing both properties if we could afford both properties, if we could get them both close to the appraised value. You know, when we discussed the Twin Beach property at forty-eight thousand an acre, we got an appraisal at thirty-five an acre. That appraisal may be a little on the high side according to Ken Watson. Ken is a great real estate attorney, but he's not an appraiser, and so, you know, he, I mean, you can pick an appraisal apart, it's ultimately, at the end of the day, it's, it's a, it's an educated opinion. Um, you know, at the thirty-five thousand appraised value, I said, you know, I'd, I'd be willing to pay more to purchase that property. I'd be willing to pay five or ten percent above appraised value, stretch it a little bit, just because I like the proximity, I like the location, I thought it would be a good thing for the community, but we couldn't get the seller to budge off of the forty-eight thousand an acre. So that kind of made that a moot point. And we still know that the rec department needs more ball fields, so the next property we found, again, not to reiterate everything that Council President covered, but again, the appraisal fell short. So again, I'm looking at it thinking, well, I know we need this, it is within, you know, half mile to a mile from the existing soccer fields, I'd be willing to stretch five to ten percent to acquire that property. And, and that is at about half the price of what, um, per acre, of what they were selling the Twin Beach property for. You know, we're not, we're looking at about eleven to twelve percent above appraised value, so it's, it's just a little bit out of my comfort zone, but it's right there on the fence, so, I mean, to be honest, I, I'm still on the fence on which way to go on that property. I feel like we could get something cheaper if we wait, but we maybe wouldn't. And if we don't-
Things are decreasing.
Then what are we going to do? What if something's not available? That, and that's the concern, is if you do miss out on an opportunity and something's not available, or if you wind up having to pay a lot more in the future, so that's sort of what I'm, I'm trying to weigh, and I'm, I mean, I'm admitting I'm still sitting here at the eleven car.
How are we going to pay for this? We don't have enough in impact fees. I negotiated three years in impact fees at zero percent interest, that's how we were able to purchase it. This is two-point-six-five million dollars. How are we going to purchase it?
And I agree, I know, that's something we need to, that's a, we need to know.
I mean, it's the toll bridge all over again.
But the things that I, I just want to, I want to clarify, I mean, sixteen thousand dollars is not what the appraisal came back at, that's the amount that you've assigned to it.
I know that, but I can't wait to show everybody this and look at, and get an appraiser to look at this, because you don't put listings or pending sales in a comp.
You, occasionally you do.
Never seen that.
Well, I work for a bank, and I'm telling you that occasionally you do.
I worked for a bank too, and I've never seen that.
Right now?
I worked for Wells Fargo, seven years before I started this.
Well, I'm telling you that I see them from time to time if there's not enough comps available, so, um, and again, it didn't appraise, so, you know, beating up on an appraiser, saying that he should have appraised it even lower, when he's, I mean, it's coming in twelve thousand less than the other property appraised for. I don't know, I, I mean, I, I think that, I, I just think that there needed to be some clarification on that. And, and Ken is a great guy, but he is also not an appraiser.
But he, he said that if we got sued for this, that this would be easy to fight. So, he's-
Okay, we're still in council comments. Do any other council members have any comments?
I appreciate Bob Keizer and Charlie Langham's comments during public participation. That's it.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, motion carries, three to two. Item seventeen is a resolution, the Council President Jack Burrell is authorized to negotiate and execute a professional services contract with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to perform a Phase One environmental site assessment on the proposed property purchased at located, property purchased located at eighty-eight seventy-five County Road thirty-two. Said contract shall be negotiated with a not-to-exceed amount of three thousand dollars. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Item eighteen is a resolution, the Council approves Fairhope, approves the Fairhope Marina shall lease, and let me, you should have a new one that was handed out to you, now, council, it's got slightly, slightly different language. Fairhope docks shall lease and make available to the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department slip numbered to be determined by mutual agreement located at the Fairhope docks at no cost for a period of ten years with two additional five-year renewal terms. Said lease to the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department is for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens and will reduce maritime emergency response times by approximately forty-five to sixty minutes. The volunteer fire department shall be allowed to install a boat lift at its own expense and following the rules and regulations of the Fairhope docks governing such lifts. Mayor Wilson and Council President Burrell is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute formal lease agreements which shall include the general lease requirements amended as necessary for the free use of the slip and the rules and regulations of the Fairhope docks. Entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item nineteen is a resolution, the city council approves the negotiated price and asks for the contract with the bidder, bid number thirty-nine, Fairhope docks bulkhead improvements project, and authorizes the mayor to sign the contract with asphalt services whether or not to exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Can I entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? I'll say that this is a little bit over the budget, but it was in the twenty-nineteen budget. I believe also, was it you, Mr. Johnson, that negotiated the lower price?
Yes, sir.
You lowered the scope in pricing modifications?
A little bit, a little bit of modification scope, but I gotta give it to the contractor. They came up with a solution on G dock that ended up saving about fifty-nine thousand dollars right there, and we're gonna get everything that we wanted just by doing it a little bit different way, so.
Okay, I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
And to the, to the contractor for doing that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number twenty, site plan review and approval at request of Larry Smith with S.E. Civil Engineering on behalf of Ten North Section LLC, Mr. Matt Bowles for approval of Ten North Section Street Boutique Hotel, a multiple occupancy project with thirteen units located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Section Street in the Central Business District of downtown Fairhope, consisting of point zero seven acres and approved contingent upon conditions recommending by the planning commission and staff. Before I entertain a motion, I do want to say that, you know, the council did work very hard with the owner and the architect. We did in good faith try to make a land swap. And this, the original idea was actually presented to this person prior to even the planning commission meeting at which the planning commission made the conditional, made the recommendation of approval to the city council. So if you go back many, many months, that was brought up, for those that think that it may not have been brought up until after the fact. But nonetheless, we couldn't come to an agreement, and that's up to their prerogative. They asked in the last, the last time it was on the agenda, to remove it from the agenda, and then they asked to be placed back on the agenda, which we have granted. Therefore, we are here to hear this item tonight.
Yes, sir. And council president, council members, last time, when we last, the council last heard this item was on May twenty-ninth of this year. And what I'd like to do, council, is the technical aspect that we reviewed in great detail is essentially the same. The request for site plan approval has been enhanced very minimally by the developer. So what I'd like to do here is illuminate for the council and for the public the changes to the request. I do have to verbalize some, two conditions of approval into the record, or into the request, which we'll do here in just a moment. And then I have all of the slides that we used from last time if we need them to answer any questions. And so, of course, the, the plan view, the elevation view that we've seen several times about the hotel itself, what I'd call to the council's attention on this particular slide is that entrance shown on this would be the east-facing elevation. The request is to remove that entrance and relocate it to a different portion of the building. I will show that here on another slide. And of course, that originally proposed entrance overlooks the city-owned property along Section Street. And so, council, this, this portion of the, this portion of the plan of the building itself right here, this was what was seen by the council on the twenty-ninth of May. I'll call to your attention the area drawn in the cloud. That involves the request of the sidewalk width that was reflected during that time. That sidewalk width request has been removed. I'll explain that here in just a moment. This is the current scheme requested by the site plan approval to be considered today. What I'd call to the council's attention is, again, the entrance that was overlooking the city-owned property has been moved down to Fairhope Avenue. So the original entrance that was shown behind the Fairhope clock in that, in that small Champford area, that remains. And then the other entry to the building is along Fairhope Avenue, as you've seen in the lower section of the drawing. The other schemes remain the same, the room layout, the rooftop terrace, the building section. And council, we're gonna go through some various slides here that we went through last time for background purposes. What I'll emphasize here, of course, is that on May sixth of this year, the planning commission approved the multiple occupancy project. Now, as a condition of approval, that requires the approval of the site plan review, as you see on this slide right here. So if the site plan approval is not successful, the MOP does not continue on as well. And what I'd emphasize here into the site plan approval itself, last time, there was a request made to staff and to the council by the developer. They wish to have seven-foot wide sidewalks, and the section you see of the zoning ordinance right there requires eight-foot side, eight-foot wide sidewalks in the Central Business District. That request has been removed, and you'll see it reflected in a condition of approval. We went through the various technical review last time in great detail as we go through the site plan review criteria. None of those items have changed since last time. We went through that data, you see some of the reflection of what we discussed last time. So therefore, the staff recommendation is, staff recommends approval of case number, this is SR Site Plan Review nineteen point zero one, and that's the Ten North Section Street Boutique Hotel, subject to the following conditions of approval. Council members, your packet does not reflect a correct condition of approval, so I want to verbalize how it should appear right here. One, memorialize the relocation of the proposed building entrance from facing the city property with the PPI enlistee right there to Fairhope Avenue as shown on Scheme F we saw earlier. And then also, to memorialize it, acknowledge removal of the request for seven-foot wide sidewalks as presented on May twenty-ninth of this year. Therefore, eight-foot sidewalks shall be furnished as required by the article and section of the zoning ordinance. Council, I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of staff. I know that Mr. Clay Adams, on behalf of the architecture firm representing the developer, is also here as well.
I want to make a comment, first of all, and I really, whomever agreed to that, or whoever suggested that, I know that I had brought up the sidewalk setback argument at a prior meeting, and I really appreciate you doing that because it's something so controversial, the last thing I want to do is start making exceptions to our, our regulations. And so, to me, it was very important. But it also was common sense to me that, you know, when you look at something that's gonna be on the corner, you know, that's gonna be the new cornerstone. And, you know, while they were trying to fit the seven-foot sidewalk setback, in the future, we don't know, I think that this being new will be the new standard. So don't set the standard, substandard to what our regulations are, set it to the standard and everybody else have to follow suit. So thank you for hearing me on that, and thank you to the developer and architect for agreeing to that. That makes things a lot better for me. And I'll make some more comments, but that was, that was a really big deal to me.
And council, I placed that slide on the screen, I'll leave it up here for just a moment.
Okay. Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that I did have an opportunity in the very beginning to meet with Mr. Adams and with Mr. Bowers via phone. At the time, he was pushing for four stories and, and, you know, I told him that that was my, that was my sticking point. I was, I was not willing to support it at four stories. He amended that to three stories. I think the, the design itself is an improvement over what's currently on the property, and we have a vacant building with a restaurant space upstairs that has not been occupied in years. I think, I think that what's being proposed would be an improvement to that location. I was very hopeful that we would successfully negotiate the swap of those parcels, because I would much rather have that part to the, I guess, to the north there, rather than right budding up to the clock. But at the end of the day, he was willing to comply with the three stories and be pretty, just want to make sure nothing over forty feet, there's no elevator shaft or anything like that that is gonna exceed forty feet, correct?
And, and thank you, councilmen and council, I put the, I put the building section up here on the screen, and so as you'll see, the top-out elevation of the elevator tower, elevator and/or stair tower, is forty feet. So nothing will exceed that.
Okay. You know, beyond that, I wish he had been more willing to negotiate on the, on the swap of the, of the property. I think he did ultimately come back and offer to sell it, but for, for the price that was being thrown out there, I just don't think for that tiny parcel that we could justify it. And other than that, I think that the hotel will add some, some value. I mean, it's not huge, it's not gonna provide a lot of jobs, but it will provide some room nights and people that want to stay in downtown Fairhope, and I think it's a nice design. And even though I'm really disappointed in the inability to swap those parcels, I feel like the developer's within his rights, and I don't know that we can really ask him to do anything additional. So, that's it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
There's certain things on there, and this may be something that Clay can answer. There's condominium, common wall, and common ceiling agreements that are in place now, and there may be some condo declaration. Is that gonna permit them to use this six months after they build it for condominiums, make, you know, a couple of condos out of that thing, or five or six condominiums out of it? Given what's on the record right now, are they gonna abolish that, or are those, those declarations abolished or deleted once that project, or, project goes forward?
And council members, that's a, that's a fantastic question.
That's a great question.
That's a fantastic question.
I was gonna make some language up for, to address that.
And, and council, so here is a benefit of the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulations have a provision that if someone requests a condominium declaration, that they prepare the declaration of condominium and prepare a plat that depicts location and the unit numbers. That goes before the planning commission for approval. So that way, they have, the property owner and the condominium members have a document they can record for that declaration. That would go through planning commission. If a document of that type came before staff for consideration, that would trigger a response that we have a change in a site plan review, and so the likely, the response to staff would be that, at a minimum, as a condition of approval, you also come back for a new site plan review.
And they would have to provide parking for a condo, correct?
In the Central Business District, well, actually, actually, that is correct, councilman. That is correct.
I want a statement on this.
That's correct.
Site plan approval.
That's correct.
I'll get ahead of you. I really think that we need a, a statement that makes that clear, so nobody can deny that.
That's correct.
When we make this vote, if, if it, you know, I think it should be added to the site plan approval.
There's some, there's some language, I mean, there's already recorded common condominium documents and condominium, common walls, and common ceilings that are already recorded and probate court, that all of these lots kind of share together. And I didn't know if that would have any preclusive effects from you guys coming back later saying, no, you can't do this because you don't have parking. They go, well, we already have these condo declarations and these common ceilings and everything else. We're just gonna flip it according to our old documents.
That's correct. That, no, that's a great statement, Mr. McDowell. And again, the, one, as, as council president and councilman Congress has pointed out too, if you create dwelling units, then you generate the requirement for onsite parking. So that issue would have to be dealt with. But if you have a situation where the use, if there's any substantial change to an approved site plan, then staff will ask that applicant to reapply for a new site plan. And so, should a condominium declaration become desired by the developer, that would trigger additional review by staff as far as the site plan itself.
Even with existing recorded documents in place?
Without vetting that, Mr. McDowell, I would say that it's a reasonable expectation there would be some level of staff review, and that we would ask for vetting if we, if we thought we needed it, which certainly we would. The, because a, there, if I, if my memory serves correct, there's a one-year period for which a site plan review is eligible, and it must be acted upon, and if it is not acted upon, then it expires. So during the process, if there was any attempt to modify that site plan, it would come back before staff in some form or fashion.
Even after it's built?
Once it's established, you have an established use, then we get into the situation of a, then we get into the situation of do we have a zoning compliance? So if, after it was constructed, any type of attempt to modify through construction the use of that property, our building department alerts the planning department. Anytime they believe there is a change of use or generated by construction, then that gets brought over to planning for review as well. So there's several checks and balances for these types of situations. If it doesn't come up through a condominium declaration, it's possible that it comes up through a potential permit request for construction. And it's not uncommon for things such as MOPs and minor subdivisions to actually be revealed through a request for building permit, and then it's brought over to planning to address. So I believe there's sufficient mechanisms in place that if there's a attempt to modify the use of this property, it gets reviewed, it gets reviewed by planning staff.
If they came back to the planning or building department, but what if they'd simply turned a hotel room into an apartment?
I think the additional.
With no modifications.
Yeah, that's another very great question, and, and we have the benefit of having Jennifer Olmsted with us here tonight, because if a situation like that occurs, then the proper procedure is for there to be a, a business license. And so whenever business licenses are generated, we actually are, we are actually now participating in the review process to determine what piece of property on which that business license occurs, and if its use is proper and allowable for that business license. So we have yet another opportunity to see it at the planning level.
Is there a way to get some language in the site plan approval that just, I don't know, somehow spells it out that, I mean, maybe, maybe, I know it's, it's already implied because it's, you know, it's already in our rules and regulations.
Sure.
But it, I'd feel comfortable if there was just some, you know, comment, just some.
That would certainly be in line, no doubt. That way, we have it memorialized and preserved in the document.
Right.
So certainly, that would be in line if that was the pleasure of council.
What would that statement look like?
And Mr. McDowell can probably help me here, but I think it would be something along the lines as, as a condition of approval to memorialize, to memorialize that the defined use of this site plan is a boutique hotel.
Right.
And utilizes the uses of a hotel, and that any changes of that use must go through the review process of the planning department.
And you could stick in there that any and all references to condo declarations or common walls or other condominium-type references are hereby abolished by the owner and are null and void. Could add some language to that.
Yes, sir.
If somebody is planning on making a motion, I would ask respectfully that you include that language in the motion. You can say, as stated by, we can go back to the video and get that, you know, verbatim.
Yes, sir. And so, council members, that would give us three conditions of approval, in addition to two on your slides and on your screens right now.
Right. And then I also want to address another concern for people, and I don't think we have any right to force parking. A lot of people have mentioned parking concerns downtown, and, and truthfully, I don't think that this business will have, you know, any more parking required than any other business, you know, any other retail store that has cars come and go all day. So I don't want to single this business out for providing parking, but I do want to tell you of a solution that I think that we have, a remedy, should it become a problem. Should we, should the, should the guest decide to park on the street every night and never use the parking garage, which they should be encouraged to do, but it becomes a real issue, then I think the simplest solution is, we don't, we don't want to put in metered parking downtown, we don't want paid parking, we don't want two-hour parking, that's not enough time to shop, we don't want four-hour parking, that's not enough time to shop. But you could put in, say, six-hour parking. And in six hours, nobody's gonna get up in the middle of the night and go move their car, and, you know, and that's if it was a problem. You put in six-hour parking, somebody gets towed a time or two, you know, and tell you they're gonna find another place to park. So I think it's a simple solution, if, if ever needed, if ever needed. Or maybe that number's eight, you know?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I hope that, and I think a reasonable expectation is as we move forward in the comprehensive plan process, that we are able to gather more data, and we're, we've got more staff coming aboard with planning, that we're very thankful to have, I think we'll have the opportunity to invest more time into better vetting and better analyzing the parking situation downtown.
Right. Yeah, what I don't want to see is somebody check in for three days and there's thirteen cars on the street in the same parking spots for three days. That, that's a, that's a problem.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's, it's very possible that.
But it's not illegal right now.
No, sir. And it's very possible that there are future recommendations and future ordinances that we just can't fathom right now. And as this development, you know, if this development moves forward and gets integrated into the community, that we can, you know, we've, you've got a staff that's going to do its due diligence, and when it needs to bring recommendations to the council, it certainly will.
Any other discussion before, entertain a motion, council?
Yeah, I just got a little bit. You know, Mr. Wilson, I want to applaud you for, for sticking out this long. First one to speak, last one to vote. I appreciate it. We, I had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to speak to Mr. Bowers a couple of times, and had what I thought were very productive conversations. And in those conversations, he did offer to sell us the corner piece of, of property. Unfortunately, that, that, there was not much support at that price. But I am hopeful, regardless of what the outcome of this vote is tonight, that, that he would still be willing to sell that if there were groups that were interested in preserving that property. You and me both. That's all I got.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. We're gonna allow the, the architect to say a few words. Yes, sir, with fairness, it's a big, big subject.
Yes, Buford's done a great job of explaining it and the two due items that we were gonna comply with. But one thing, maybe on, when you're re, looking at the tape to see the additional requirement, maybe it's not just a boutique hotel, there is that lease space downstairs. So, you know, just include that, that's been on the, of site plan the whole time, but we don't want to eliminate that.
You could say the guest rooms, the guest rooms would be used for hotel purposes only.
That's right, that's right. There is a small lease space on the front. And Matt's never intended for it to become condos, there's no kitchens planned for it. Maybe when we tear down the buildings, those condos, there are some of those plane changes and condo air rights, but they may, may disappear when the buildings go away also. That's the legal issue. But I think handling it the way you say it, by making it a recommendation along with the other ones is the way to handle it, and he would be fine with that. He wanted to be here, he's been at every meeting over the last twelve months, he wanted me to tell you all that. He couldn't make it tonight, but he's been to every meeting but one over that period of time. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other comments, council? Okay. I will entertain a motion for site plan review and approval.
Some move.
Second.
And is that with the additional recommendation?
It's with staff's recommendation and additional wording by Marcus McDowell.
Okay. So that's, you're amending your original motion? Who made the original motion?
I did.
Okay, you're amending your original motion?
My original motion's with the two staff recommendations and additional.
Right. Language.
Language by Marcus McDowell. Language by Marcus McDowell and Buford Keating.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for that. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, you'll be given three minutes. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I just wanted to ask one question, and that was on 16. When do we have a public hearing on that? You keep talking about this was discussed with the public, and the public had time to do this. This was in council meetings and in rec meetings. I don't recall a public hearing on this subject. I just saw this come up for sale, that you're going to spend 2.65 million. I don't remember that public hearing. When was that?
I believe that we said it was discussed in public, which it was.
It was discussed in public, but there was no specific public hearing.
We did not have a public hearing, nor is it required of that, and we didn't have a public hearing on the Twin Beach property, nor on the Volanta Avenue, which has been negotiated recently.
You don't think you should, 2.6 million? Nobody gets to say anything? I mean, it's announced tonight, you know, there's no public meeting on it. The other thing, too, was your absence in saying how you're going to pay for it.
We got a couple of weeks to come up with that, it won't be very hard.
Okay, well, I guess you're going to, and you will take into consideration your earlier meeting where you were talking about the roof on this building, this building built in 1960.
Take it all into, yes, sir. Good time to do it during the budget.
You'll come up with all that money, too.
Probably not. There's some things going to have to be cut. And I also want to say that I really, I truly think that people elect us to make decisions, and not every single decision has to have a public forum to get feedback. I think that it's, a lot of those are very, very politicized and used for the purpose of, you know, politics. So, yes, ma'am?
No, it involves a lot of the public. That's what public hearing means.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
My name is Helen Hall, and I'm at 6319 Henshaw Road here in Fairhope, and I was here last month questioning about the sewage system on Twin Beach, because nothing has been done. And my concern is, we're still smelling that mess. You guys up here approving money for everything but fixing that. I hate to be like this, I don't care about anybody else, any other neighborhood that's smelling that. I'm concerned about my neighborhood. We are going too long with this crap flowing down into what y'all call wetlands, we call the swamp. It's filmed over. Who do we need to get involved in this? Because I just passed there yesterday, and you can't even, you rode right through there with your windows up, and it stinks. My daughter passed that through there a few minutes ago. It's still stinking. Now you done pulled the pump. When I was here last month, you said you had some type of something to put on there to filter the smell. Where is it? You approve, you approved money for a recreation center, you try, you're spending money out there, 2-point-something million dollars. You need to be putting that money to get this mess fixed that you guys created. Whatever I have to do, whoever I have to get involved going forward, I will.
Mayor, can you give us a status on that?
I'm actually calling Richard, because I wouldn't, uh.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a staff, a mayor and staff, and the money's been approved, and I, you know, I can't tell you what speed it moves.
Yeah, I was told that last month, the money had been approved.
It had been.
Yeah, 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 but it's not fixed.
I think when we approved it, I think Richard said, as far as the smell is concerned, my understanding is whatever spill that occurred there several months ago was remedied, as in they fixed the cause of the leak. But the smell is, is, there's the deodorizer.
Well, it is not deodorizing.
No, no, it's not.
Well, he just, he said that they ordered it, it just got in the warehouse, and they're installing it next week. He just told me.
Okay. Well, okay, another thing, because all of that crap went into the swamp, who's going to clean that out? Who's going to go in there and dredge that or clean that mess out of there? It used to be lily pads in there, it used to be cranes in there, it was ducks in there, it's nothing in there. It's, it's green, it's mess. So who's going to go in there and clean that out of there? Yeah, see, y'all approve money for everything, but you don't approve anything to clean up the mess that you created, the city created.
Well, I will tell you, it's two different budgets, but I'm texting him now, and I think, well, at least I have Clarissa's number, and I will respond tomorrow after he tells me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public participation, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.